Everybody else ready? All right, it's seven o'clock. We can begin planning board meeting of June 28th, 2022. For those that are participating virtually online, which it looks like that's just you for right now, Don. Oh, and Linda. If you have any questions or want to participate, make sure to use the raise hand function and then we'll let you know. And you can unmute yourself and participate.
Can you just acknowledge that Haley is?
Oh, there she is, yes. And Haley will be participating virtually online. Haley, can you just say presence, I guess?
Present.
Good, and you can hear us, which is the other thing, which is good, so. All right. So, first thing on the agenda, we will open the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan application for AWNW LLC. For the improvement of Sunnyside Lane and the creation of four new lots, parcels 2088, 2089, 2092, 2092, one, and 2093.
I recuse myself from this business on the grounds that I am in a butter and I'm going into the audience.
For the record, Molly, we work with Sam McNary, representing AWNW. Mark White with AWNW is also with us tonight. The definitive subdivision plan for Sunnyside Lane has gone through several reviews. We're at a point where engineering has their sign off on things. You know, drainage has been worked out, everything's been reviewed. And there isn't really any new material from the last meeting, so. And Elizabeth was kind of just on the decision, so being able to read through that.
So, the draft decision went to town staff for their review and I can bring it up. It has, it has been a very challenging, I don't know, months for town staff. I don't, I don't know why things are, just seem to be just so, I don't want to say out of control, but everybody's kind of pushed to the limits right now, so some of the comments I've received back were just today. So I'm going to share my screen and we can walk through, we can walk through the decision and I can go over, go over some of the revisions and then I know Sue Felshen has raised a number of, has a number of comments and it's, it's my, you know, it's my opinion that a lot of those comments are just planning board related to some of the wording of these conditions. Many of these are standard conditions that kind of just evolve as projects go through, so. I can, I'll have, I can have Sue go through those. And I did print out copies. Or I can bring up her comments that she provided, so. The first part of the decision is always just the legal requirements as far as, and I can zoom in a little bit, the legal requirements under subdivision control law as far as the noticing requirements, the hearings, any time extensions. I know this is familiar to some of the boards, but not, not all of them, so. The second part is the project information and the site information. Most of this language comes straight from the staff report that the board's already reviewed. There's always a zoning analysis, which again, that came from the staff report. So because this is an existing private way, there's this section seven, I mean, the section 3.3.1 is typically not in a definitive subdivision plan because they're actually laying out a new road right of way, so a determination of frontage. This is the findings that the board would have to make if somebody submitted an A and R plan and said, I think these are all approval not required lots. You know, the board could come back and say, no, we, we don't think so and, and this is why. So this just goes through and makes that statement on why the applicant is submitting a definitive plan for an existing laid out road, even though it is private. And then we get into the required findings that the board makes as far as the action by the board for approval of subdivision under 5.5. They're, they're fairly simple compared to when you get into the rest of the document, when you start talking about waivers. This first section in highlight is based on my conversations today with the engineering division. There was one additional comment that was in their latest comment letter dealing with the traffic information that the applicant submitted and wanting to know the peak rate of traffic. And this is, was one of Sue's comment, it's not the intersection, it's, and Molly can correct me, but it's the peak rate of traffic on Lawsbroke at this intersection. And the reason they're looking for the hours of that peak rate is that the engineering division has received a grant to look at all of the traffic in, you know, a certain distance from the intersection at Church Street, at Main Street and Com Ave, and received a grant to do timing and signalization improvements. And so they need to look at existing peak traffic and the times and take into account any additional projects that are on the future and the, the increase in traffic that they may bring. So that's why having the time of the peak on Lawsbroke was something that they were looking to have. So, is that, is that correct? Okay. It's, it's been a crazy day. I was telling Sue, it started with both key fobs not working this morning. And then it went downhill from there. Okay. And then this comment is green was something that I received from the natural resources director this afternoon, which was not in the revised decision that the board and the applicant got earlier. But it just notes that the requirement that natural resources will have for native plantings.
Can I, can I ask a question on that one? So is that, is the implication there for, as it says, offset those that will be removed, offset those that are native and invasive or with only native, obviously, but?
I'm, I'm not sure what natural resources. I, I think it's any trees.
What we've agreed to base now is just you need a living tree.
Whether it was invasive or not. So, natural resources jurisdiction is within the buffer zone and which is slightly different than what is protected under the tree preservation by law. But, you know, we're, we are trying to at least become consistent between the two, but it's, so it's something that we're still working on as far as conditions.
Are those copies, the up-to-date ones?
No, this, these are copies of Sue's comments that we'll go over. I didn't have time to, that's why I made, I changed them to green, so you could see them more clearly. And then, these are just all the findings for the eight different waivers. There were eight different waivers. And then we get into the conditions, and this is where most of the changes happened. And so this is just a, after speaking with engineering, having a note on the plan, and I know Sue, Sue will bring up some of her concerns regarding the wording of that condition, but it's, it will just be a note on the plan so that it's in both places, it's in the decision and it's on the plan, so if somebody were to go to the registry of deeds, it will show up in both places. That the road is to remain private. And so condition 16 in the version that the board had also referenced the requirement for a COVID-19 safety plan, which is no longer a protocol requirement. Additionally, this condition was prior to, prior to the commencement of any site work, which was more specific to the COVID-19 safety plan. So after speaking with the assistant fire chief, he agreed the 241 plan is only required prior to the issuance of a building permit. So I left this condition here, so it didn't throw off the numbering of all the other conditions, but ultimately the final decision, this will be moved. All the numbering of the conditions will change, this will get moved in the proper order. This is just for new planning board members. Previously, in previous, before I came back, conditions were just written and had no order. So you could have, you could have a building permit, site work, building permit, occupancy, site work. So town staff has, especially the building inspections division, who is the one that monitors many of these conditions, feels that that's appropriate, so, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to mess up the numbers until after everybody had a chance to look at them. It's and and this is, this is a comment that Sue will bring up, but how the homeowners association factors into the existing property owners and the responsibilities and having the wording of this condition. And I think it just, it's going to take some discussion by the board and the applicant to wordsmith this. And the green is a condition that the natural resources director added this afternoon, it will be reflected in the order of conditions as well for these lots, but felt it was important to have this included in the homeowners association documents regarding the mowing of the infiltration basin. Did you have any questions on that one, Mark? H. Do you want me to, I can, I can make this. It's 28H. Is that better? On the screen?
Under H on my screen.
No, that's why it's in green. So it's the requirement regarding the annual mowing of the infiltration basin. Thirty-three, after speaking with the applicant was to, just to allow, and this is provision to allow a performance guarantee for compliance with the tree preservation and removal permit. This is consistent with the tree protection by law. Felt it was important to add it here, just to know, to, to show that it is allowed. Condition 34, after speaking with the health, the new health director, this condition and Mark brought it up was not written properly as far as the timing and who was the entity to issue the certificate of compliance, so now it reads appropriately that the applicant submits the certified as-built plan. And then the certificate of compliance gets issued by the health division. Thirty-seven, which was just clarifying, deleting, it should be noted that it, it, it's not a note, it's just a fact, the individual underground electric services are owned and maintained by the property owner. And then forty-one, again, was a condition from the building commissioner. And forty-two, again, that condition from engineering, but clarifying that it's the time of the peak rate of traffic on Lawsbroke Road at the intersection. And forty-three, the the trustees' training affidavits, what we have found for projects that PRDs, it happens, there's always a homeowners association. And for this project, there'll be a homeowners association. For older PRDs, trustees would come in and the, the new trustees, people who buy into the property, and they have no idea what they're getting into as far as maintenance of your stormwater or the PRD Offcomberford Road actually has a, you know, onsite, single onsite sewage disposal system for all of the units that has pretty strict maintenance requirements. And they've had some PRDs where nobody realized what was involved. And next thing you know, their septic system is failing because nobody's bothered to maintain it, so. We've done this for the last four PRDs that we have done. So it's, it really is kind of just a PDF. I don't want to say marketing material, but that's kind of what it looks like and it says, you know, you're buying into, you know, quail run estates and here's the, you know, the things that the homeowners association is responsible. And as a trustee, you should be aware, there's yearly maintenance. You can't mow the infiltration basin every weekend. And so it just lists those items. And then for the first trustees that enter, purchase and enter into this homeowners association, it's just a, you know, an affidavit that says, yep, I was provided this. And from that point on, you know, the, the town has no, you know, responsibility or ability to, you know, enforce or monitor homeowners associations. But we feel that at least the initial people coming in, you know, it's, they're made aware of this and the document becomes available. Should, you know, every time a new trustee comes in, you know, we like to think, you know, hopefully they'll provide it to a new trustee. But this is just for the initial people that come in, be made aware of what they're getting into.
And how Elizabeth, in a subdivision like this with four houses, are the trustees appointed or picked or?
So, I mean, that's, that's really going to be up to Mark and I don't know if it's just the four new lots or is it the two existing?
The homeowners association will be represented by all the homeowners in there, which will be 11. And then there's all the new owners are responsible for the maintenance of the expense, the maintenance of the drainage. And if they all, initially, they won't be elected, I mean, they'd be really volunteer. Yeah, until the subdivision roadway is complete, I'd be the trustee. And then I'll design at the last closing and is either two or three that'll need to take over.
I was just curious, thank you.
So that usually is part of, you know, the homeowners association documents. It says, you know, maybe since there's 11, maybe it's three or, or five, number one, an even number. But maybe it's two from the new lots and two from the, you know, existing property, you know, owners. And so however you do it, but that's.
Keep it as simple as possible.
So it could be three, but one from a new lot, one from an existing lot, and then the third can be from either. That'd probably be the best. But again, that's not something that we can dictate. But yeah, you can provide them as many examples as they'd like. And so I think that's, I think that's it. Some of, and I'm just going to jump ahead, Sue, to some of the one comments that I can answer on my own. So, starting, starting from the back. I'm working backwards. So condition 45, Sue raised a question on restrictive covenant because it's not mentioned anywhere else in the report. So under subdivision control law, the state actually says that the planning board can require a performance guarantee for the installation of the roadway, stormwater drainage and utilities. However, the applicant gets to choose from four different types of performance guarantees. And those are listed in the subdivision control law. One of those is a restrictive covenant. And a restrictive covenant says that the lot cannot be released, none of the lots can be sold. A developer can sell the whole thing under a restrictive covenant, but you would not be able to sell an individual lot under a restrictive covenant without a lot release. That lot release is required to actually come to the planning board for your review and approval. With that request for a lot release, the applicant's engineer provides, it's basically a punch list of, these are all the elements for the roadway, the drainage and the utilities. This is the cost for those installation and, you know, the, the final requirements, whether it's, you know, the development of the as-built plan. And so all of the things that cost to finish the roadway, the drainage and the utilities. And then you have, you know, we're going to be releasing, you know, you can release one lot if the remaining lots that are being held in the restrictive covenant are sufficient to cover that cost. At some point, you get, you can get to a level where the, it is possible that the amount of, the cost for the amount of work to be finished is more than, let's say, one lot being held for the restrictive covenant. What would happen is that the applicant under subdivision control law has the ability to provide an alternative performance guarantee to get that lot released. And then the board holds that other type of performance guarantee, whether that's a tri-party agreement with a bank, a letter of credit or a CD or in, you know, in some cases, it's, you know, five grand and, and they just provide a check and the treasurer holds the check. So that's what, that's what this means. Under subdivision control law, it is the applicant who can request as many partial releases from a performance guarantee as they wish. The requirement is that all of the roadway improvements in the stormwater drainage and the utilities have to be installed to a point to service that lot. And so, bless you, in some very large subdivisions, you may have a type of stormwater drainage where you can build half the road, have those lots released, fill the next half of the road. In, in this case, it would be, be how the stormwater drainage is being designed. It's going to be very difficult to get that type of partial release. But, you know, there may be where, you know, the road, the road only has to be done down to binder course to get a lot released. So they may have all the stormwater drainage in and the utilities in and only pave to binder course because they still have construction going on and don't want to put down a final foot of pavement. So it is possible to get, at that point, it would be a partial release and we would hold a performance guarantee for the remaining work, whether that's just the final quote of pavement and striping and, you know, planting of trees and stuff. So that's what that, that's what that means. So at this point, Sue, I can, I can bring up your comments and we can go through those if that's, unless, I mean, unless anybody has any other questions about what I've gone over. Didn't you notice something, Andrew, when you were?
I already fixed.
Oh, yeah, no.
I already fixed that. Should I go ahead? Yeah, so let me bring up. And top to bottom or bottom to top? We, we can go top. Let's go top to bottom. Sue Felshen, 19 Sunnyside Lane, I am a member of the planning board, but I'm speaking for myself and also on behalf of my neighbors. Right. Looking at page eight. Seven, sub A. Okay, okay. The language reads, a note stating that the roadway will remain a private way now and in the future with no obligation placed on the town, et cetera. And I'm aware that people who live on a private street may make application to the town to have it accepted as a public way. The conditions under which the town might accept it are onerous. So it doesn't happen very much and isn't likely to happen, but nevertheless, this is the first I've noticed that this decision would take away the rights of myself and my fellow existing neighbors to do so at some time in the future if it became possible. And so I would like the board to consider striking the words now and in the future. So that it simply states it would remain a private way with no obligation placed, placed on the town. And the neighbors could attempt to have it accepted in the future, likely as that is. That's my first comment, should I continue? I, unless, Nathan, you want to have a conversation about each comment, it might be easier.
I think that makes more sense, yeah. So, anybody on the?
Why did we put that in there to begin with? Is it just?
So it is a standard condition for definitive subdivision plans where waivers are granted to the design requirements because waivers to the design requirements means that it does not meet the standards that the town has put forth, which would be for a road constructed to the standards is intended to be accepted as a public way. So, under subdivision control law, the board has the ability to grant waivers and condition those waivers as they see fit. And so this is a standard condition for subdivisions where, you know, substantial waivers are being granted. I, I, I again, Sunnyside's kind of a slightly different animal. So I don't, I don't have any issue with deleting the words now and in the future so long as that language is there. So anybody who is purchasing a home on this street has the understanding that this is a private way. And, you know, the, you know, the first really bad winter, it's, they think, you know, having it accepted as a public way is going to get it plowed, you know, any better. It's, I don't, I don't have a particular issue with it so long as this language in some fashion is on the plan and in the decision. I would like to clarify that this is what I meant by onerous, that I would assume that if we wanted to get it accepted as a public way, we would have to redo everything until it met town conditions, which will probably never.
we would have to redo everything until it met town conditions, which will probably never.
Well, you, yeah.
And then we would have to ask the town to have it accepted and the town would still be within its rights to.
Yeah, you would, you would, you would have to repave the road to twenty-four feet wide. I mean, the, the right of way is only forty feet wide and it's supposed to be fifty. So, I mean, there's.
Right.
So that's, that's.
This reality is in the way.
Yes, reality is in the way. So that's another reason why I have no issue with that language being removed.
That, that was my question, but my question was more, given that we've provided this waiver, it would seem to me that we want the understanding that there was no intent to put the town through that process. And the fact that you're asserting that you assume that the town, you know, what if you moved, you know, everybody moved, it turned over in terms of the entire neighborhood and, and then people came and said, we think that this should be a, a public way and that the town was in error in some sense in providing the waiver. And, you know, sue us. Do we have a liability there?
No, I, I mean, there's, there's no liability for the board or the town as far as the granting of a waiver and under its decision and the road being accepted or not accepted as a public way. There's, there's defined processes that somebody has to go through to even have the road make it, you know, from the planning board, the Public Works Commission, to the select board before it's ever even considered to be a warrant article on town meeting. So there's significant, there's significant gates you have to go through before it even makes it as a warrant article.
And that was all an onus on.
The whoever is petitioning the town to have it accepted as a public way. So if, if future owners came and said, we want this accepted as a public way, they have to go through the planning board and the Public Works Commission. I'm fairly confident that both would make a recommendation to the select board that it not be accepted as a public way. The select board would also discuss it and decide not to let it move forward as a warrant article.
So I, I guess I would say, well, why not just leave the wording in there as it stands because it's, it's a moot point, it's never gonna happen. And this would make sure that it was understood that the intent at the time was that it, it wouldn't be undone and made into a public way. Because we we allow the decision to go forward, that it, it doesn't meet the criteria.
Which is perfectly within the board's right. I mean, the board could have required it to be twenty-four feet of pavement. You know, storm, regular stormwater drainage, no LID. You have the streetlights.
Fifty foot right away.
Well, no, you would not be able, that is, that is probably one waiver that you would have had to, to grant because, because properties on either side have already, were already sold. But, and it was an, it's an existing private way, a road that was laid out. But as far as improving the road, the board, you know, is under no obligation to grant those waivers.
And I, I think Sue's point, I'm sorry, if I'm putting words in your mouth, let me know. I think her point is that there are existing people on the road who are affected by the approval. So there's a concern that this, the way it's written, the now and forever, would actually be taking rights away from people who aren't part of this, other than being, I guess, part of a homeowners association later. So that's, that's, I think, the concern.
That's half my concern. And the other concern is that I'm looking forward to thirty years in the future when we have stopped driving cars and we're all going in single user helicopters. And the town changes its subdivision requirements to say that roads only have to be ten feet wide for the bicycles and the wheelchairs. And at that point, we could perhaps sue to have it accepted as a public way. So therefore, given that without the language now and in the future, it does state that it will remain a private way and it places no obligation upon the town, it seems to me that it precludes some possible chance in the future that is not necessary to.
My read of it, I, I understand where you're coming from. My read of it would be the same way is that it, it's basically precluding anybody from any point in the future, even going through that process, the way it's worded. So by removing the, the now and forever, it at least allows for that, you know, technically allows for that process to take place, regardless of what the outcome may actually be. Yeah.
Which would require really different conditions on the ground to succeed, but.
All right, so for efficiency sake, do we have, I want to take a straw poll on whether to leave it in or out. Those that want to leave it as is with the now and for, now and in the future language in there, raise your hand. Oh, sorry, yes.
Comment that I hadn't thought of, and I think Sue brings, brings up a very fair point for the existing residents that, you know, we've, as a group, we've worked really well together in coming up with this plan. I've been very upfront with them in this. The wording, I read it and I said, okay, seems fine, but it's, you know, Sue's so eloquent and brought out that now and in the future, no matter what happens in the future, like you say, you could have ten-foot bicycle paths. I don't know, but I, I think this, by eliminating that under the current standards, to get this to be a public way would be onerous. I mean, it's just, there's all these waves that have to be reversed. You'd have to come in and rebuild the roadway. But if something, you know, fifty, sixty years from now, times change and transportation changes, it would at least give the residents the opportunity to meet the current standards that are required.
Back to that quick straw poll, those that want to leave it as is, raise your hand. Those that are okay with removing it?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I think we can move forward off that one.
And having put you to that tremendous pain, I would like to point out that on page twelve, the same language appears again under item twenty-eight. Sub item, which is B, which is fine, well.
So we'll make that change as well.
Great, lovely. Under item twenty-eight, sub item D, the language states, a statement that trustees of homeowners association shall have permanent payments, responsibilities and perpetuity of all the elements of the onsite stormwater drainage system. And I think I understand the intent of this, which is quite suitable, but I think that it behooves the board to clarify the language a little bit and perhaps Mark can help as well, as to whether this binds all of the trustees, all eleven, to maintain together all onsite stormwater drainage system items or merely solely the owners of the newly formed blocks, four of them, or the lots being rebuilt, which.
I think six.
Six.
So as I've been mentioning our, um, senior, the new stormwater requirements.
You have, this is just about how it's worded, not about what the actuality is, which is quite reasonable. This is just a word sort of thing.
So. So if, if I'm understanding, so it's the trustees of the homeowners association for the four new lots, six new lots? Six new lots.
It's really, because some of the lots aren't new, they're existing.
Right, so the.
Six new homes.
The, the six lots owned by the applicant. There you go. But I'm not sure how to word that yet, because that's not, that's not correct either, so. So what, what it might be easier is the trustees of the homeowners association for the four new lots and for parcel, whatever the two parcel numbers are for the existing, that's how I'd rather word it.
Any questions from anyone on that one?
And then the only other was the word onsite stormwater. It's, it's not the, just the onsite, it's also the offsite stormwater drainage swale along the roadway as well.
And the catchment.
The catch, the catch basin.
But I mean, the swales in front of each house, Sue, the swale in front of your house, the only maintenance is gonna be mowing that.
Right. Yeah, it is just that the, when the language is onsite.
Should be deleted.
To be phrased to clarify that it's the six lots of the applicants that will response, be responsible first off on the site of Sunny Side with respect to storm.
This is complicated words with the second. So all of these conditions don't have to be so specific because the homeowners association documents will be provided to, to town, town staff to review. So I'm not, I'm not too concerned about how it is specifically worded in the condition, because it's going to be detailed and explained quite a bit in the homeowners association documents. So I don't have a problem with deleting onsite. I know what the, I know what the intent of this condition is.
Should I go on?
Yep.
Okay, page thirteen. Item twenty-one. So we had a small discussion earlier of the responsibilities of being a trustee and that some sort of document will be provided to the initial owners saying, you're gonna be a trustee. I wondered if there would be anything in the, and perhaps I should leave this up to the homeowners association agreement, but in it, binding owners to transfer those responsibilities to anyone they may sell to in the future. Now, of course, it would not be the town's obligation to make sure that that happened. As a homeowner, I just am interested in knowing that if new person X sells to new follow-up person Y, that I would have the grounds on which to sue if they decided to, you know, not do anything.
So, one, that's, that's one, outside the purview of the board.
Okay.
Two, when you sell a property, you don't sell being a trustee. Trustees are, however, the homeowners association documents elect a trustee or, you know, whether, usually it's a vote of all the members or in. So when you sell your house, you might be trustee. You don't sell being trustee with your house. So that's why, that's.
Okay, so this is a different provision, I misunderstood, and thank you.
So.
The comment.
A homeowners association will be binding on anybody who purchases one of these lots. Regardless of whether you're a trustee, the trustees are the ones that have the fiduciary responsibility for maintenance of things and paying for that maintenance and making sure the bills get paid and things get maintained. So that's what being a trustee means. And that's the difference.
Okay, I misunderstood. Page fourteen, item forty-one. The last sentence reads, the top soil should be stabilized by seeding and or sodding. That seems likely to need to occur, but I thought it would be friendly to include the option of planting live plants as in a garden bed. But that may be getting too deep into the weeds.
So Mark, correct me, I think this is actually a building code requirement.
Eat live plants, that's gonna stabilize the soil.
So whether they put down winter rye or what's the, jute mats, aren't they, are they? Yeah, you know, put down jute mats and seed or sod. It, it has to do with, I think the building code requires that the soil be stabilized, so there's no dust erosion. So that's where that requirement comes from.
Now I understand, thank you. Next page, page fifteen, first item at the top, number forty-two. I did not understand what the time of the peak rate of traffic means. Ordinarily, there are two different peaks, one heading in one direction and one heading in another direction. So if the town wanted to know what the peak traffic rate was in order to time signals, they might be interested in both the eastbound and the westbound peak rates. But I leave that up to the board or the town planner to know what that's supposed to mean.
So this was discussed previously and one of the findings the board has to make is engineering's comment and getting the peak, the time of the peak rate on Laws Brook Road at this intersection so that they can work on the timing of the lights in the West Concord Village. So consistent with previous, previously in the report, it's the time of the peak rate of traffic at Laws Brook Road. They, they already know, you know, what the, the future turning movements will be because you're adding four new homes. So this is just, what is that peak time of traffic? So they can take into consideration the additional cars from these four new lots and the timing of the intersection lights in the village. What's your question?
It's, no, it's okay. It's, it's basically just the, the one hour of the day that has the most cars.
Yeah, is it, is it at six thirty? Is it at eight?
Right, maybe in the morning, evening.
Right, so that engineering can work on the signalization in the village.
My question on that has to do with the wording, both on page four, where you're saying the CPW Engineering Vision has recommended. And then here later on, it says, prior, prior to release of the performance guarantee, it shall be provided. And it looks like, in one, it's just like a recommendation.
So that's all town staff can do. Town staff can only make recommendations on conditions of approval. So engineering is saying, we're recommending that this information be provided. So that recommendation gets reflected somewhere in the body of the decision as part of your findings or your deliberations. And then it gets reflected in a condition of approval.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
It's kind of like when you tell your kids, now's the good time to go to bed.
And later on, it's ten is the time you will go to bed. So town staff provides the board all its recommendations and then it's the board that says, yeah, we, we, we like that recommendation and we're going to make it a condition of approval. Is that it? The other comments in here have to, that Sue had, had to do with timing and, and I think I, I, previously I answered, just giving a, telling everybody what it means to have a partial release or a final release of a performance guarantee. So, so that, that's it for the decision.
All right, so what should we do is, yeah.
Yes, so it would just be move to approve based on the.
My move that the board approved the definitive subdivision plan application of AWMW LLC for the improvement of Sunny Side Lane and the creation of four new lots, parcels twenty-eighty-eight, twenty-eighty-nine, twenty-ninety-two, twenty-ninety-two dash one and twenty-ninety-three.
And it would be based on the board's decision, findings and conditions of approval in your decision as amended this evening. And I can just say, yes, that works for me.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second? Take a vote, all those in favor?
I.
And then I.
Sorry.
I think you have a roll call, Haley.
Yeah, Haley, or is that a yes? Yeah, Haley, or is that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Right, so.
Okay. Question. I'm thinking about this and it may be not appropriate, but I had just wondered if, if we could ask the applicant for any feedback in terms of process or and, and also any feedback in terms of any zoning requirements that you might recommend the board review that you felt might have added the difficulty of the project or the expense of the project that just might.
All the time, any, I mean.
Children in town, women have been building in town for over thirty years. And it's difficult to get things through the permitting process and even to get a building on a, a simple lot. I mean, I find the town staff, all the in-town employees to be very professional and competent. We enjoy working with them, but there's a lot of steps that I think add to the cost of that home that I really don't think bring any value to that building. And it can simply, it can, it's simple to say, well, the builder makes all this money, he can absorb it. Well, we don't, we pass it on to the consumer. So there's a lot of soft costs that are, that are part of building that I don't find necessary. And I welcome the opportunity to sit down and speak with Elizabeth or some other point, but I could go on forever.
I think even if you were to have like a punch, prioritize punchless sort of of things that you'd like to see, and then that's something we could have a discussion about.
I think that would be very helpful. And, and I, I would regard that, I mean, because I think we're we, we want to make housing more affordable and, and this process speedier for you and for town, our town professionals. As Elizabeth pointed out at that outset, are overwhelmed as well. So I think if we can find a way to streamline things, that would be super. So thank you for being.
The town staff to be incredibly professional and easy to work with, but they have they have rules and regulations that they need to look on. So I'd more than willing to sit down and I probably want to bring a couple of my guys in that actually do the permitting, but it would be good to maybe get Stamsky involved as well.
And for any other developers who may be reading the minutes or listening, we also welcome your comments as well. It's not just one, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. It's an enormous amount of material for four lots. Okay.
All right, welcome back soon.
Next on your agenda is the A and R plan that was submitted today. I usually don't add things at the very last minute, but this one is fairly simple. So, and if you will notice, the date on this plan is April of last year. It took the property owner an entire year to get through his mortgage company to be able to do this land swap. So so, right. So this dash line right here is the existing property line. And they are doing a swap, the property lines moving over. So this area right here is being transferred from three eighty-three to three sixty-one and this area right here is being transferred from three sixty-one to three eighty-three. Both lots have the required area and the required frontage on an improved adequate public way.
Don't we have to post things before we can review them?
So the agenda, the planning board's agenda was posted last week while in advance of the meeting. And then the, under open meeting law, the board has the ability to amend their agenda and repost it. So it was reposted today online and at the town clerks.
But it doesn't give the butters an opportunity to see the agenda?
There's no requirement for notification of a butters for an A and R plan.
I thought it had to be an emergency or, or something like that to throw things.
No, it has to be an emergency if you want to post a new agenda less than forty-eight hours. But not a new agenda item. If that were the case, the select board would meet, have to meet every single night.
Sounds like a good idea.
So you're going to be on the slide board now.
And why are they doing, why is all mortgage they say?
The, the husband did say, and I'd rather not, I'd rather not say.
That's fine.
Sorry, I missed what the question was. I guess.
Why is he doing it? Because his, well, the, I don't, the answer was, this is something that the wife wanted to happen for different reasons.
Just curious.
Is there any, any discussion that anybody wants to have about this?
Okay, I can make a motion.
That the planning board moved to endorse the plan by Snelling and Ham. Snelling and Hamel Associates, Inc., titled, "The Plan of Land of Concord, Massachusetts, for Alexander and Nicole Keely and Thomas and Joan Darcy dated April twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, as approval not required because the plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance which changes the size and shape of the lots in such a manner that each lot has the required frontage as required by the Concord zoning bylaw and authorize the chair, clerk or town planner to endorse the plan."
I'll second that. All right, all of those in favor? I, Haley, yep, okay, unanimous. All right.
So for your second item, it just did not happen.
Okay.
It did not get finished, but I'm, this is the planning board's goals and projects. So it's probably one of the first times, other than minutes, that I have not provided something to the board and I apologize. I'm, I'm personally and professionally going to last year, your letter to the select board didn't get submitted till July twenty-eighth, so I'm at least a month ahead of last year. I'm going to try not to be hard on myself, but again, I apologize that it's just it's.
Let's just go home earlier.
Well, I, I, at least I, the new admin assistant, she's been here a little over a month now, our new senior planner, Anne Clifford. Today was her tenth day, so. And if you haven't met her, she's, she's amazing. She comes from the city of Waltham. She has been the curator for the last twenty-five years at the Stonehurst, the Payne Estate. So and so we're very, we're very excited to have her on here, but it's, as I said earlier, we support ten boards and committees now. So I can't, I can't really send either one of them to a meeting yet by themselves, so it's been challenging for Russia and I, so.
Totally, okay. All right, so then we'll move on to what I'm sure is a very low-key topic. Throw Depot Business District zoning discussion. So the idea behind this discussion is to sort of think about sort of the results of the last town meeting and what, if anything, the board would like to do going forward, either for this town meeting or upcoming town meeting or thinking about, you know, what elements that you might want to sort of pull out and do separately that you see value in. Really, it's sort of a, it's sort of an open-ended question. And I know the two new board members don't, don't want to put you on the hot seat, but if you have thoughts, we'd be glad to hear them. Sorry, Elizabeth, you were about to say something?
No, so what? So the board have a brief conversation, you know, quite a few months ago, while not a brief conversation, it was a pretty lengthy conversation about this. But then at your last meeting, I just gave you an update on what your last year's goals and projects. And one of the items dealt with the Throw Depot zoning bylaw amendment, which did not pass, but during the discussions on the Throw Depot bylaw amendment, there were some, you know, comments made by, you know, a number of citizens, you know, certain aspects of that that article. And the one that I heard repeatedly from a number of different people specifically had to do with the combined business residence section, which the Throw Depot bylaw amendment incorporated basically a new combined business residence provision for that district. But whether the board wanted to pull out that one aspect and talk about whether, not just for the Throw Depot, but whether that is a zoning bylaw amendment that the board wanted to think about or discuss or flesh out whether that would be a good bylaw amendment for the existing combined business residence section. Many of the comments allowing a combined business residence to be in separate buildings. And and I can bring, I can bring up that section specifically, but there were the, you know, the designating the affordability requirements and having them be, some of the units be at fifty, at eighty percent and others be at the hundred to hundred and ten percent. So that was one item that I didn't know if the board wanted to discuss as well. So I was just going to throw that one out there.
And that would be specifically for the Throw Business District or all the business.
That's open for discussion, but I don't, I don't, I don't see why, you know, those specific elements of the combined business, if they, they make sense for a combined business residence, why it would make any difference whether it's in Throw Depot or Concord Center or was Concord Village.
By right or by special term?
That, that would be, no, it's current, it's, it's currently by no, I'd have to look. That, that would be open for discussion, but I have to, I have to.
Was affordable housing part of the presentation that you made?
Yes.
Yes.
It modified the mix.
Okay.
So affordable housing is not required for projects that are four or fewer. One unit for five to ten and then twenty percent for over ten. Sorry.
And what about, you talked about the MBTA having some say on development around the stations. That's no place.
That's completely separate. You know, that's the amendments that were made in January of twenty-twenty-one to the zoning act, which inserted a new section three A, which is the MBTA, MBTA communities requirement. The act, the changes to the zoning act itself for that section, it's, it's three little teeny paragraphs, which if it was just those three teeny little paragraphs, it wouldn't be an issue. But the Department of Housing and Community Development is the one charged with developing guidelines on how to implement the requirement or fifteen units per acre within half, you know, within a half mile of a train station of MBTA, whether it's train station or bus stop. The draft guidelines that DHCD issued at the end of December, this planning board wrote a joint letter with the select board and many other communities and entities wrote comment letters to DHCD on issues, concerns on how they were expecting that new provision requirement to be implemented. That basically makes it impossible. So that's, that's a separate, you know, that's a separate conversation.
That's not a character we could use.
Until the final guidelines are, are issued, which we're not sure whether it's going to be the end of summer or early fall or by the end of the year, and they haven't really stated. Communities have no idea how they're going to meet those requirements. And so, yeah, so that's a, that's kind of a conversation, you know, that's separate than what the board was working on.
By the time of next town meeting, say we worked on that, would we have information, refreshed information from the new housing production plan and new information from whether our forty B requirements are still being met? And it would seem to me, if we had that new information, it gives a rationale for moving ahead with something in housing. But if we get to the next town meeting and we still don't have clarity on those two issues, I'm not sure what new we bring. So I'm, do you have a feeling for where that might stand?
I, I I thought both were going to be available by the end of the year, which then it would be, it would be too late to, you know, the, so town meeting, it's my understanding that the schedule is going back to what it previously was with the warrant closing, I think, the fourth of January. This past warrant, it closed the February second. So you basically had an extra month to do things. So you're, you know, you're kind of back on the previous schedule. So I'm, I mean, we, we, the board still has, has time to to develop, you know, potential bylaw amendments and warrant articles before the warrant closes. If, and I, I agree, having both that information is important. And I can find out probably tomorrow and, and you know, the board can put this on the agenda again for your next meeting when those two information is supposed to be available. And then the board can decide whether to try and move forward on a parallel track or postpone this for, you know, a one-year, you know, town meeting until you have all that information.
I think it would be important in some sense to have that information, but there's also just a great deal of uncertainty and a lot of lead time for housing. So for example, we don't know what's going on at the moment with Junction Village, whether they will secure their funds and if so, when they'll be able to build. And even if the information about our housing production plan or our forty B status isn't available in, in a timely manner, I don't think we should just sit back and say, well, let's wait another year because if we were to put an article on the warrant and it were to pass and it were to modify our ability to build affordable housing, it would take another year or two or three before it was actually proposed permanently built. So why wait? Just to find out information, which frankly, the way the state is going, we may not be able to find out about the MBTA housing for a long time. Who knows? And the best projections of the town with respect to housing and forty B are only best projections and not guarantees.
So, I, I, so there's two things that are, we're talking about sort of same time. We're talking about sort of pulling out the, the mixed-use component and having that exist as a standalone potentially for all business districts or depending on discussion, only Throw Depot. And then there's the affordable housing component. So in my mind, the idea And then there's the affordable housing component, so in my mind, the idea of pulling out the, the mixed use component. It, it, I, I just feel like that eventually leads to a situation where it's the worst of both worlds, because. Say that passes, but we don't have any of the setback guidelines, we don't have any of that. And then, you know, obviously Thorough Depot is sort of the most obvious candidate for that kind of development, and if people were upset about. You know. Potential development that was being shown to them under the new guidelines that were more pedestrian, more aesthetically pleasing. You know, what is possible in a mixed use scenario, you know, under existing guidelines, which are. Not, not really there. I, I don't want us to get to that point where we allow that. And then people are resistant to, to do the follow up work of, you know, building out the guidelines and setbacks and everything so that we have a good outcome. And use of space. So I, I'm reluctant to make that separation because I think that messaging needs to be key to. Whatever warrant article is going forward, that those two things are about. Developing, I mean, we can talk about all the business districts, but either developing Thorough Depot or just business districts in general. In such a way that is, is what the town wants to see and how the town wants to see those. Those areas utilized into the future.
So once the, once the DHCD issues their. Their guidelines, because I'm part of the. Criticisms that. You know, and I'm, and I'll be, you know, clearly upfront, completely, you know, invalidated criticism dealing with MAPC and the work they did. For the board. DHCD is. Working with, you know, the legislature and different programs to provide funds for communities to hire outside consultants to. Do. You know. Everything the board did for the last two and a half years. But it, it would be focused with trying to establish zoning that meets the MBTA requirement. The, the issue I have with that is that the board could move forward and file and, you know, file for a grant to get that financial assistance. Hire an outside consultant who, you know, is fine. And supposedly working for the town other than, you know, our regional planning agency, who that's all they do is work for the hundred and one cities and towns. And come up with. Something that the community doesn't want to have to meet the MBTA requirements anyways. And, and so it could be, it could be the same arguments that it's just don't want the density. And so I, I, I think the board's in a really challenging position on how to move forward.
Is that why it fails is the density question?
Um, not, no, not necessarily, I think, you know, I think some of it is, you know, just an. An education side of things, you know, there are criticisms with the by law amendment, you know, regarding height, well. Actually, the by law amendment would reduce the height of structures than what's currently allowed under the zoning by law, so I think part of it was an education piece. Part of it is, was also just an understanding of just zoning is a framework. And you, you can't do a traffic analysis on framework, because zoning allows for a lot of different uses. Different uses have different traffic requirements and patterns and counts and. And so it, it's. Part of that is just an education piece. Some of the, you know, the other comments, you know, like the, the FinCom. You know, what's the, the fiscal impact with the zoning by law amendment, again, that's, you know, that's almost impossible. To do any type of analysis, because there, it's private property and people. Property owners have the right to develop their property. And the framework to develop that is, is zoning. And they can choose to, to do a, a high end building and with different uses that bring in. You know, different financial revenue and, and financial impacts to the community. But zoning doesn't determine that. It just provides the framework, so I'm, I'm not sure how the board can move forward. With some of. Addressing some of those issues. Because they can't, the, it, it's not something that the board can do. And, and the only way to do that was, you know, similar to what MAPC did, here, here's a concept, here's, here's, here's something that possibly could be built. But it, it, there's no guarantee that it's going to be built like that or. In that manner, and, and it is entirely up to a property owner, it's no different than, you know, a. A single family dwelling property owner wants to build. You know, a. Except outside the historic district, you know, a colonial and then have a modern structure, you. You, you have rights as a property owner and that, those rights extend to commercial property owners as well, so. I'm, I'm. I'm at a loss.
Do you think the nebulous of that concept scared people? I mean, like, you know. You showed some great rendering of what it was envisioned like, okay, but there was no. Guarantee that that's what was going to happen.
Well, I think that's true right now, right, we, we have no control, really, I mean, within reason over what takes place at Crosby's Market right now. I mean, one of the things I kept saying over time was that. Stop and shop right on some, so could sell that property to Amazon, Amazon opens a Whole Foods there. Do a traffic study for that, or worse, Aldi buys it and Trader Joe's moves from Acton to there, and anybody who's ever been to a Trader Joe's knows what traffic and parking lot is around that, so. I mean. The reality is, like Elizabeth was saying, you're, we're just looking at framework and sort of. You know, the direction that the town is trying to go in terms of how that. That land use is, is done going forward, and that's only one piece of all of the different properties that are, that are there. So, you know, it's just conceptually thinking about, okay, the town has X, Y, and Z goals, how can we build a framework to achieve those goals? And, and yeah, so the renderings were, were one aspect of that, I think. Yeah, people got kind of hung up on that without kind of thinking about, well. What could the land use be right now under current zoning and would you be happy with that, and I think generally the answer to that is no. Especially with setbacks.
That's, I think that's tough for people to get their arms around a little bit.
I suppose we could have had a rendering produced of what could happen under current zoning to show the cost of inaction. Or two different renderings, you know, one a giant car parking lot, I don't think we could do that, and the other.
I prefer not to go the, I don't want to try to scare people into saying, like, I'd rather say, here's, you know, again, these are the goals that the town is trying to achieve. Visually, like, in terms of both visual and accessibility and use.
But we did have the carrot of what we, we would like to see something sort of kind of like for the town, but it's very hard to understand the. For all human beings, it's hard for us to understand that, that doing nothing isn't actually changing nothing, it's, it's having no influence over what happens.
Right, is, is there a way we can? Reinvigorate it and make it into something like an environmental or open space overlay district? And sort of go through, because that's kind of. What I heard people care about. They don't really care about as much affordable housing and higher density and all the thing, you know. But if, if we said, okay, what, what could we add or what could be a scent that? The town, it really gets behind and that we have a strong advocate voice for. Is there a way we can? Reconfigure the. The thematic. Pattern of what we're trying to accomplish. And say, okay, we'll try all electric in this overlay district and see what happens.
I don't know, the voices I heard more were people who support the environment in terms of open space. And we can't just rezone the parcel as open space.
No, no, but right now, the zoning requires a great deal of open space.
Or, or for a combined business residence.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but not for just a commercial development. Right, there's no open space requirement for a commercial development.
Other than parking.
So, but, so if we try to put in multi-use, and all of a sudden we're in. Do a big open space question, but we're never going to get open space.
Under the current zoning, you will, you will never get that amount of open space. And that's why I think it was two years, there's the waiver provision. So this is how thirteen B Com Ave and Concord Outfitters. Had to go for a special permit and request a waiver to the open space requirement. And the consideration was given how close it is to Rideout, how close it is to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. I'm thirteen B, how, you know, how close it's going to be now to Jarrow. So there was enough open space. For those residents of the combined business residence project. That they didn't need them onsite.
We have twenty-three acres of open space right behind.
The, what, Crosby's?
Crosby's.
You know, most of that is just.
Conservation.
Conservation, yeah, what, what?
It's, it's inaccessible.
It's inaccessible, so.
It's open space.
Yes, but the, the current provision for the combined business residence, that open space requirement was generally. In a business district. There isn't a lot of open space for residents, so the concern was the residents of that combined business, just a combined business residence. Project. Wouldn't have any, you know, open space for, you know, to be outside.
There's Emerson Field and there's.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the existing provision before the waiver went in.
Okay. So there's no way we can get any kind of overlay district?
You can, you can get an, an. I mean, the, the, the board can do, propose any type of overlay district you wish, but what would be, what would be the? Again, you would be starting from scratch. And so. Under, I, I, I understand, you know. Sue's comment and. You know, it just, it, it does take so long for things to, to happen and get through, but then. Even the discussion now, it's, well, you know, what about this, what about that, and it's like, well. That's going to, that's going to take some work and that's going to take some, you know, community outreach and more than likely that's going to take getting a grant to have hire a consultant. To assist with all of that. Okay, and then, you know. Your point about, you know, the housing production plan, it's my understanding that it's supposed to be completed. You know, sometime in the, the fall. Or, you know, but I can, I'll have to ask the housing consultant about, you know, that and. And then it was my understanding that the twenty twenty census information is supposed to be provided by the. And it's not just the census information, it's the subsidized housing inventory as it relates to. You know, the number of households and there's different elements that DHCD uses. So it, it's not just the straight number of the census, they take out, you know, group homes and different things. We should know that by the end of the year as well.
So that was the other, that's the affordable housing component, which. Again, if we think about, those are all, it's not one, you know, contiguous piece of property that, that is going to be developed at once, so. To me, the idea of, like, focusing so much on the affordable housing component. Beyond what was already done for the prior, you know, for the warrant article that was proposed. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because it's not as if they're all going to come online at once, so if. By some chance, you know, something gets developed and it bumps us from ten percent to. Ten point five percent. Like, that, what, I, I'm, I'm just trying to see the downside of, of, of that component of. Of, you know, building in for the potential to have more affordable housing in there, because what, because what we were doing was trying to, again. Allow for any affordable housing to, to be built, where as of now, it's not.
Well, in most of the district, anything that got redeveloped would be a unit or two here or there, but if. The Crosby property were to be resold and completely redeveloped, that would be the bulk of any affordable housing.
Maybe.
We might get, if we, no, if we were to get any at all, but if you point out, if it were to be redeveloped right now, we would probably get no housing affordable or unaffordable, period. And then that property would be gone for twenty or fifty years, so. There would be some value in trying to. Increase the chances that we might get. Several units of affordable housing there, you know, a dozen, maybe.
But, but then that goes against, oh, sorry, Haley, just want to say one thing, but then that works, that's what we're trying to sort of. Work sort of within the confines of the reality that, you know, a developer is only going to build. Let's be frank, what is going to make them a return, so if you, if you make it so much so in terms of affordable housing, that they. They just don't develop it, or they develop it in a different way, then it's counterproductive to what we're trying to do.
Right, I was looking at in the, in the scope of the previous, the article thirty-eight, was thirty-eight? We've already forgotten. Where if it were combined business residence, if the ground floor were, oh, a new grocery store, and if there were three stories of housing above, that might actually be enough units that with. What was it, ten percent affordable? I can't even remember.
But we, we, so we tweaked it so that it was, it wasn't just, there was, I guess we can put it this way, there was big A affordable.
And little A, but taking.
And there was little A.
But taking any kind of affordable with that number of units, you might even get ten of units that are affordable by some metric or other.
Right, but that's still less than what is under current.
But it wouldn't get built under current.
Exactly, but I think, I think we're talking past each other.
Yeah.
The point was that we're trying to get something.
Yeah, right, if we do nothing and it gets redeveloped, we'll get no affordable housing at all, where, so in, in that sense.
Big project that if we don't need forty B, we don't have much. Say in.
Right, uh, yeah.
We go above. Ten percent, you know, we'll, we'll have no say in anything, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that, that.
Well, I mean, I think there's a fair chance with no Christopher Heights or whatever. That we, we could be, you know.
If, if Christopher Heights does not happen. I'm, I'm fairly certain we will be, we will. Go above ten percent. Below, below ten percent, sorry.
We all heard it. Haley, I'm sorry, we keep talking over you or past you, so please.
Oh, all good, I guess just to make sure I'm following along, like, if, so. To the point of like, well, if it got redeveloped today, we would have no, no, nothing, but is that, is that true? Because I thought it was a special permit. To, if it were to get redeveloped today, is that not true?
Um, it, it, it just hinges on the, the front corner of the parking where the commuter parking is. You know, they could redevelop that property and have all their stormwater drainage be in that corner. And then not have to have a special permit.
Okay, with the special permit, they still wouldn't have to build housing, wouldn't we pretty much have to grant a special permit?
There's, there's never, there's never a requirement that you have to grant a special permit.
Well, no, but we get sued sometimes when we don't.
I'm, I'm not going to speak to.
Okay.
I won't speak to litigation or, sure, prospective litigation because of a zoning by law amendment. And special permits are discretionary.
Yeah.
Somebody, somebody can sue however much they want, but land court, they are. Somebody, somebody can sue however mu- much they want, but land court, they are discretionary, right?
Um, so I guess I was just curious, maybe mostly for Elizabeth, but for anybody else who was arguably following this closely, more closer than I was at town meeting, but like, would it have made a difference if it the new proposal and all the language um, was put, was exact, was the exact same, but it was still a special permit versus by by right or just was spite site plan review. I just was curious.
I thought it was special.
It was special permit.
No, that was a whole, that was a whole deal. It wasn't by special permit anymore. It was just going to be site plan review. Well, Elizabeth is looking that up. If that's what she's doing, I wanted to
follow on to something you said earlier, Nathan, which is that you didn't think that we could pull out um, combined business residents. And like apply to multiple districts around town, um, because of the lack of also changing dimensional requirements for setbacks and things and I.
I didn't say we couldn't do it. I'm saying.
Or it would be a bad idea.
Would be not what we want.
Yeah, we couldn't do it without running into a bad situation that we'd be sorry about. And I see your point about that. And, um, I haven't read the article for two months, so of course I've forgotten everything in it. Um, but I was, I wonder if we could, if we pulled out the setbacks as well, would that mean we then had the entire article except the redrawing of the uh, lot boundary? Or um, could, would it be possible to do something where we said we will apply this to all the business districts around town? And if you choose to do this kind of combined best residence, then you must also follow these setbacks and um, design guidelines. And it's your choice. I don't even know if that's a possibility.
I, I am not following. I'm not sure how that's different from.
The original proposal. Oh, that's what I mean about what, what else, what, well, there was the changing of the lot line.
No, no, sorry, not, not talking about the lot line. That was the sort of segment that was hanging off into.
The zoning district boundary.
Yeah, zoning district boundary, excuse me.
I'm talking about the, the actual setbacks that were, that were modified uh, for the warrant article. So that was a big. I think there was a lot of confusion around that because uh, uh, you know, people were concerned about height, but they didn't realize that we were constraining where that height could potentially be relative to existing zoning where you could buy special permit have um, you know, forty feet, sorry, forty feet of height.
I agree, and I wonder.
Five or ten feet off of a.
I think you're right. There was a lot of confusion, but if we had the combined business residents and the setbacks in height, but not the affordable housing and not the changing of the district boundary. Would that, I mean, the article failed, but it didn't fail by that much with that plus an extra year of education.
But, but the affordable housing component is, is how you get it built.
Yeah, okay.
Otherwise, like, it's not, it's not financially.
Yeah, a big, a big complaint or a big criticism was the law of unintended consequences, that people felt that by tweaking it, we were sort of destroying the devil you know and going for the devil you don't. And I'm, I, I in, in what you're saying of pulling things apart and trying to tweak it, I feel like that would have even more of that kind of effect where all of a sudden you've done this, but it didn't have all of the, the other principal use limits. There's some interesting on her screen, but, but you know, it didn't have all of that other stuff to go along with, because the goal was to make it more holistic.
Yeah.
And, and to Nathan's point, I kind of agree. It's, if you want to do that overlay change to, to have the combined business for everybody, that's sort of the second step of figuring out how it can be applied to each district or city, but it's, it's, if you take that one piece out, you end up creating Frankenstein of it's not a cohesive plan anymore.
Um, what if on the one hand, we went, this takes me, I see your point, this takes me back to maybe people think that the devil they know is what we have now as opposed to what we could have now. And also, I'm really uncertain about this. If we were expanded to all of the business districts, then on the one hand, we would get more people up in arms that, oh, my God, do you want to change things? But on the other hand, we would get a larger number of interested parties who we might be able to um, make a pitch to about how this would actually be valuable to the town. Uh, we did get a lot of single issue voters out at town meeting, um, Monday night.
So what I can tell you is a combined business resident is a by right use in, in all of the commercial, well, in the business districts, Concord Center Business, Throw Depot um, Business District and Nine Acre Corner Business District. It's, it's a, it's a permitted use by right, not by special permit. Um, and the Throw Depot Bylaw Amendment retained that um, provision that it was by right if you met certain requirements. Um, there were other elements in the Throw Depot um, Business Zoning Amendment that said, well, by special permit, you, you could do this and do that and, and other elements, but it, it currently is allowed by right. Um, but to Linda's point, um, you know, like the, the open space requirement is, um, you know, basically it's ridiculous. Nobody is going to build it. The only reason we've got them um, lately is because of the waiver provision. Um, that if somebody doesn't want to meet that open space requirement under the current bylaw, they have to get a special permit and get a waiver to that provision. Um, and so that's currently, you know, how it is being done right now. The, the language for a waiver is just that the, you know, the zoning board of appeals, you know, you know, finds that it's, you know, not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood to grant the waiver and um, so it doesn't have any actual parameters. And in the Throw Depot um, of warrant article, um, it actually had defined um, what um, what the open space uh, should be. It's, you know, what it's intended for, um, has to be, um, it um, does not need to be contiguous, however, it has to be usable for sitting and recreation, other active uses. So it can't be the little strip all the way around the edge. Um, and then, um, there was a provision that the planning board could grant a special permit to satisfy all or part of the open space requirement through the provision of improvements to existing parks and access to existing parks and walking trails and connecting to adjacent districts. But the open space itself was fifteen percent of the lot area if containing residential. Um, currently, if there's no residential, then there's no open space requirement. And that's, that's what is, it is right now in the current bylaw.
Hey.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess, like, my point was, uh, you know, if I'm on a butter thinking about this, like, um, if I see it as a special permit, I feel better about having a say and being heard in some very big redevelopment versus by, you know, by right. And so I, that's why I was just curious, like, if that, if anybody got any of that, any specific feedback along those lines for, you know, why, why it failed? Um, and if that, in, in the spirit of like thinking about what's actually achievable from a revision perspective to, to still get something in next year in town meeting versus like blowing it all up and starting over, right?
Although as Linda just pointed out in an earlier discussion, we have so many owner's requirements, including special permit applications, that it makes it very harder for builders to come in and build things. So I, I, it feels like we're between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, it's just, it's very hard to get a legitimate denial out of us just site plan review versus, um, special permit.
Yeah, that's true.
So, so, um, you, you, you've been at this for a while.
Yes.
Um, so I, um, I, I think there is some value at, um, looking at the existing combined residence, business residence section and, um, and maybe just incorporating the open space and the affordable components um, from the Throw Depot Business District um, into the current provision. Um, and, and I, I think modifying those two provisions, you know, may spur, you know, you know, some generation of.
So this is modifying it where it's already permitted by right.
Right, and, and you could, and you could modify it and then, um, you know, change it to be, you know, a special permit instead of by right. And, and that would, you know, that would be if.
It might make people feel more comfortable.
That would be a fairly simple provision, I mean, of amendment. So, I mean, if that's something at least the board just wants to look at, I can mock that up for your next meeting. What that would look like.
Yeah, I, I think that, that would be all right. I, again, I just go back to, I worry that even under a special permit in that situation, um, if a developer wanted to, to move forward and did build a mixed use, um, building at the Crosby's lot, um, are, I, I guess what we've seen in the past from other developments is that our ability to sort of suggest where things should be placed has been pretty well thwarted many times. And so if you were to have a developer who wanted to redevelop that space, wanted to make use of the special permit process, went through that, presented several uh, renderings of, of what that new development may look like. Um, and let's just say it's a giant apartment complex that retains a big parking lot out front.
Um, well, then, then it's a, it's a special permit and it's discretionary. And it doesn't get approved.
I, I guess I hear, I, yeah, we, I don't want to get into, like you said, I don't want to get into like if we're, we end up in any sort of litigation over things, but.
Couldn't we use the same design guidelines though that we've, that was just a long time was spent putting together? Like, wouldn't that still be guiding the special permit process?
Um, well, only, um, only as far as the, the architecture, but a lot of the design guide elements were contingent upon the change in the setbacks and the requirements um, for, you know, like, no parking in front of the building, parking has to be behind. Um, and um, so some of those requirements, um, you, you couldn't satisfy those in the design guidelines because they're not reflected in the zoning.
Got it, okay.
I, I feel like we've, in a lot of ways, gone full circle. We, we all agree we want mixed use, like that, that is a good use of a space like that near transit. I think we're all in agreement on that. Um, there may be some, you know, uh, discussion, I guess, around the affordable housing component of that, but I, I think we are all in agreement that affordable housing along with um, you know, open space requirements as they are now are an impediment to development happening there at all.
Well, and.
That's what I'm sorry, 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 that's sort of mixed, mixed use development.
Yeah.
In that space. Um, so I think we really think that.
You think affordable housing is a detriment to that project?
I, I, I can, I can tell you that is partly the reason currently that thirteen B com have cannot move forward. Um, the cost of labor and materials and the, um, you, the, and I don't, and I want to say, you know, somewhat of the, the high end of that project. You know, a lot of time and detail went into developing um, that proposal, uh, that it requires two affordable units, um, that that particular developer is because of the cost of labor and materials, um, the, and that, um, he's having difficulty even getting a bank interested in financing um, because of the, you know, the, the financial aspects of that project. Um, and that's why it's, you know, currently is not moving forward.
So, so why do all these apartments in Boston and New York City have this like that clamor for, to meet those affordable housing?
But it's, it's density.
Yeah, okay.
Um, you know, in many parts of Boston, it's probably, you know, a hundred units per acre.
Right.
Um, yeah, not, not just four.
And square foot price, like, I'm sorry, Concord's nice, but it's not, uh, Manhattan penthouse.
And if it's two or three stories, you have to have an elevator for just the one or two stories of residential, but if it's a hundred story, all the story, yeah.
So, so I, I, I think, yeah, we're in agreement on a lot of these aspects. And then I, I would think it's also fair to say that, you know, in terms of design and, and accessibility in terms of uh, pedestrian use and, and everything. We, we want to see something that is more welcoming for that use, outdoor dining or, you know, outdoor seating, all of the, all of those things. Those were all components of that warrant.
Let me, oh, oh, I will give it a shot for the next meeting and take those two components, the open space and the affordability. Um, and, um, you know, have it see what it would look like to amend, to, you know, amend the existing section for two, three.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anything we can do about it at this time, and this is more of something for our general goals and projects discussion, but I think it would be a good thing for the town of Concord if we had more uniformity between our similar districts. I understand why we have four business districts and there was good reason we split it up that way. But nevertheless, if there's some way we could increase the uniformity by not just doing things for Thorough Depot, uh, but for everywhere, I think it would be of benefit. Maybe not so much Nine Acre Corner because it's so tiny and far away from everything, but I'm just throwing that out.
You can't do much with Main Street because of the historic district.
Well, but then there's no harm of changing the zoning, is there? Because it won't actually do anything, but it would look more uniform on paper, which would solve the problem of gigantic charts that go on and on with endless footnotes. Uh, yeah.
All right, I want to be mindful of the time and, uh, it's a little after eight forty-five, and I want to give an opportunity for um, any public comment on, on this topic either here or online. I see, Don, you, uh, you've raised your hand. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Don, cup, uh, thirty-nine Devon's Street. Um, I'm, I'm a member of ThinkCon, uh, but I'm speaking on my own behalf, uh, with this comment. But I, I just wanted to share, um, that a large component of the value of any land is its zoning. And when we are talking, comparing, say, Throw Depot to another parcel, the big difference here is that it currently has, according to current zoning, a pretty low valuation. But if you zone it for three, four stories of market rate housing, overnight, the value of the land quadruples. So if you think about an empty parcel in town, you'd like to see developed, and you'd like to see some affordable housing here. Are you helping by multiplying the value of cost of the land? You're actually raising cost of the development dramatically. If, but it struck me that just about everything we were doing in that, uh, last proposal was value, was increasing the value of land, reducing parking requirement, we're eliminating the open space requirement. All of those things were maximizing the land value very, um, much detrimental to, uh, the goal of creating affordable housing. Um, if we have a zoning, uh, that as of right allows, um, some marginal uplift in the value of the land enough to incent development, believe me, there are a lot of developers who'd like to to build market rate housing in Concord. Um, and then we allowed additional density, if that's affordable, I think you'd find it would fly. Of course, if the current owner isn't amenable to selling at all, uh, we could go to twenty stories and it's not going to happen. So we can't force development through zoning changes. But I just wanted to point out that going as, giving as much as we can is, is through all the well, good intentions, but taking away open space, taking away parking, giving three, four stories is actually simply raising the cost of the land, and that's a bigger component in many cases than the cost of labor and materials in the development of affordable housing. Uh, and, uh, so, so please think about that. This is a unique opportunity, a very unique situation where we have a site that's zoned for a very low economic value. Um, and we don't want to simply see the land value become so high that no, uh, portable housing will ever be built there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. Thank you. Thank you, Don. Uh, I mean, I would just add to that, that, you know, this is a balancing act, right? Like currently under the, the zoning, no affordable housing is being built or. There really is no potential for any affordable housing to be built. So the goal is to try and find that balance that you were talking about, Don, between the, the value of the property and, and, and the cost. Uh, associated with, with building affordable housing to, uh, to happen. So that we actually get something out of that, whether it's affordable housing or it's, uh, you know, uh. Uh, an adjustment to how we think about open space in terms of how that can be utilized or, uh, developed offsite. Um, you know, these are ideas that, that, you know, should be considered, uh, to make it a reality. But thank you. That was, that was a great comment. Hope we have, we have a, uh, yeah, you are on camera, so.
Okay.
There you go.
Uh, three forty-seven Lexington Road. I'm president of the Concord Housing Foundation and a member of the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, both of which obviously are very interested in affordable housing, but the suggestions. I'm going to make and which I put in a letter which I believe Elizabeth has received. Uh, basically, I want to encourage you to keep going, uh, with what you've started in the thorough district. Uh, in answer to the question without Junction Village, uh, it's pretty clear that we won't make forty B. We've got, even if you count Asabat Bluff, eight units maybe in the pipeline. For affordable housing, uh, and many of those are two or three years or more out. So that's a real problem, uh, and it may change people's attitudes. Because we only have to flip thirty-five votes to pass what you introduced last year. Uh, we only lost by about sixty-eight votes, if I recall. So my concrete suggestions, as I look at the comments that were made, there's the. You know, let's leave aside, you know, no change at all. It was. Uh, process, it was traffic, it was size. And it was, uh, will we get the affordable units? Uh, bear in mind, I want affordable units, but just smaller apartments would be better than one and a half million dollar houses. Even if they're, you know, four hundred thousand dollar condominiums. Uh, at least older people here in, in Concord could potentially live in some. So, you know, I'd like to see us keep going or see you keep going. And I have three potentially useful suggestions. I don't know whether you can draw a line at the railroad tracks, but, uh. I think the historical argument goes away. If you don't talk about the, uh, the in-town side of the railroad tracks. Uh, and focus, you know, it wouldn't just be Crosby's. It would be the other development, but that was developed, what, fifteen, eighteen years ago? Nobody's going to change that and it's consistent with your guidelines. Uh, number two, you know, a lot about traffic. I think Mr. Flint was absolutely right. That, you know, it's not, the problem is not going to be twenty or thirty families living where Crosby's is now. Um, but I think that can be done, you know, and you can run a traffic model with current, uh. Backups and traffic loads and say, okay, what if we put twenty more cars in here? Forty more cars in here in the peak hour, morning and evening. Also, I would note that, uh, if you, with lights, everybody who's commuting. Can just go left out of that lot now to route two. Um, so think about whether you could do that. Um, thirdly, um, you know, I think, you know, to me, the, the height issue was bogus. There's plenty of three-story houses. Within, you know, three or four hundred yards of that site. If we agree nothing could be more than three floors, would that make a difference? And then, uh, finally, I'd like to volunteer on behalf of the affordable housing community. I heard people say I could support this but. And the butts were usually not, if you took the affordable housing out, the butts were traffic, the butts were, you know, flesh this out. So, um, I would love to sit down. Uh, with some of the people who, uh, spoke against. And see if there isn't some way we could, you know. I, I don't know quite how you would structure it as a invite, you know, we can't be a formal town board. Could we convene it on our own, just, uh, the affordable housing community approaching some of the people who spoke at town meeting? But see if we couldn't come back to you with something that might, uh. Get us those, uh, thirty-five votes if you will. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. I, I think one thing, um, that would be very powerful is if we could. Um, at next town meeting, come up with a slide that says. Here's all of our support from all of the affordable housing groups in, in the town. Because we, we didn't have that and, and I think it was, um. I think that might have put us over the line.
Yeah, we didn't have a slide. We did have a, uh, a handout, but, um. Um, certainly anything we can do. I can't speak on behalf of the trust, but the foundation will do what we can to support you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that. I was, I had a similar thought, that and, uh. Sort of structuring, um. Some, over the period of those two and a half years, you know, we heard a lot of the same concerns and issues. And just laying those out in a simple form, even if it's a table form of. Uh, you know, proposed zoning, existing zoning and just. At, at full length have each one. So you can see side by side. If somebody keeps bringing up the height concern, well, under, you know, there is potential to have that or greater. And like we have, I think we had some of that, um, but really. Really hammer that home. All right. We're at nine o'clock. Uh, let's try to, let's try to go through. Yeah, absolutely. Um, please introduce yourself.
Dick Robinson, I live in that neighborhood.
Your, your, your address.
First of all, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the issue.
Part of the process, you, you have to introduce yourself, your name and address.
Dick Robinson, one forty-three Elsinore.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand how you guys approach things and, and you have a kind of a shorthand, which is. I'm trying to catch up with, but I'm, I'm trying to understand from tonight at least. Why? Anybody who bought that property would move to mixed use. Where they stand to make so much more money as a commercial property.
They wouldn't.
Hey, we, we don't know that.
Not stuck with the open space requirements, then as Elizabeth said. Yeah, you, you, you could pack it in with, with commercials. So I, I don't understand how you can steer toward mixed use. When the economics point toward.
I'm, I'm not sure that those economics point that direction. I'm looking at. No, currently there's no requirement for open space. I'm not, um, suggesting that. Um, that a property owner wouldn't want to do a mixed use development. Um, under the current zoning bylaw, which requires, um. It, it's like, you know, twenty-five percent based on the number of units. It, it's, um. The, 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 the current requirement makes it, makes it impossible to do a combined business residence. Because you, you have to utilize so much of the property. So it's not that, uh, a combined business residence project isn't financially viable or makes money. Um, there's communities all over the Commonwealth that have, um, that type of zoning. And, um, those projects are being built every day. It has to do with the existing zoning bylaw. And the requirements under the existing zoning bylaw makes it, you know, financially unfeasible.
So that's where you want to change it to make, to make that look. More viable.
Um, if, if the, the goal of the community is it is stated in the, you know, town's long range plan. And, you know, what is the requirements for this board and the planning board's charge? Is to look at what Nathan said, that, that balance. It's, it's not just open space. It's not just affordable housing. It's, you know, not just financial impacts. It's. Um, it, it's, it's not just looking at the schools. It's not just, it's, it's looking at all of those things and trying to find that balance. Um, and currently that balance isn't there. Um, so because it, it was only in, um, until the zoning bylaw allowed for the open space waiver provision. That you even got two units above Concord Outfitters or thirteen B comm have. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other hands raised, uh, virtually, um, I think we can move on to any. Liaison or town planner updates.
I have, I have one exciting update. Um, we received notification today, um, that, um, from the governor and the lieutenant governor. That the town of Concord was awarded four hundred and seven thousand dollars in mass trails funding for the Asabet River Bridge and Trail Project.
That's so great.
Um, so that's combined with the three hundred thousand that town meeting authorized from Community Preservation Act funds. Um, the final construction drawings, plans, estimates and permitting will be completed. Um, but that still takes like a year, year and a half, people, so don't get too excited. Um, but what it does now mean is that, um, we are now, um, on the tip. In the world of projects, um, and because that funding has been fully appropriated and we're moving forward. It can now begin the process of actually being scheduled in a specific year. Um, in the Transportation Improvement Program, which this is our actual tip application has gone in. Um, are, we, we have a project, um, we have a project number. So, yeah, so for people who don't know, that actually means something. It means that the state actually knows we have a project now, so we exist. So now I just need to move forward and get it programmed in a, you know, specific year for, um, actual construction funds. But yes, so we found out today, so that.
For you. It's great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited.
That's good news. Any liaison reports? Okay. Uh, I guess that just leaves, uh, general public comments. I'm not seeing any. In the room and none online. So with that, I think we can end.
Adjourn.
Adjourn at nine oh three. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye Haley.